Here, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this community in which we live and we thank you for all those who are gathered here this evening. We pray your blessing on the business that we will carry out. We ask that you would give us clear thoughts and thoughtful words as we carry out this business. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. This is a pleasure, Luke.
.................................
Welcome everyone here tonight. As I said earlier, anyone that wants to speak on item one of Old Business, we have a public hearing on our budget. You're more welcome to come to the paddock at this time and sign in and we'll have that in a few minutes. Anyone else would like to speak on anything, you're more welcome to come to the public at this time? Do you have any takers tonight? Yes, sir. Come on up. You can come back to the podium, sir. You can come to this one. There you go. You can sit at that one right there. We got two podiums, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have some eye problems, don't see.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
I want to thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and speak. This is my first time to the city council meeting. I live in the county, but I am concerned about this 4A international development and the rezoning issue. While I understand the property is all in the city limits, we all know that the infrastructure demands are going to hit the entire county. And I don't want to see the developer walk off with a huge profit at some point and we are all left with the infrastructure issues and how to solve them. What I would like to see happen is a comprehensive group of people, the leaders of this community, come together. The school superintendent, the fire chief, Mr. Mayor, council members, board of commissioners, water and sewer authority people, and look and see, you know, what's the cost and what's the benefits? You know, I don't want to see our property taxes in a couple of years go up because the fire chief says, "Well, we need a fire station for this, in the area of this new development," which we, you know, may well need. And now we're going to have to raise our property taxes. I don't want the water and sewer people to come in a couple of years and say, "We need to raise our water and sewer rates because we have to do such and such for them." We need, I'm not opposed to growth at all. I understand the idea of growth, but I would like to see us do a comprehensive plan of what this is going to cost and what the benefits are, and then come to the taxpayers of the county and city and say, "Here's what we think and here's how it will work and here's what we're going to get from the builder of this development." That's all I'm asking for. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Not bad, all things considered. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Steve Mackey. I'm a resident of the county. And as you know, the county provides the water and the sewage and the fire services for the city. And this new development, I mean, the land's been there for a great number of years. There's 300-plus acres that have been sitting there, was acquired by a speculator many, many years ago who thought he could sit on it for a while and flip it. Of course, the way the economy and things went, that didn't go so well. So they're trying to present all these wonderful plans that look really nice and these watercolor diagrams and pictures and talk about how wonderful it's going to be. The unintended consequence, I think, once you take some pragmatic thought and understand that, the water and sewage department today loses about 30% of everything they try to pump through to its customers. We're using a splosh. 70% of the county's splosh money is going to fix that water infrastructure in the county today. There's a tremendous amount of heavy lifting that needs to be done before our water and sewage infrastructure can actually handle something that they're considering to do over at the 4A construction site over there, the 300-plus acres. I think that we would find ourselves in one of these "oh dear, oh God" moments if we actually go through it. The unintended consequences and the burden that you will put on the taxpayers of not only the water people, who have to pay for the water because their water rates will go up, it's not a matter of fact if, but it will go up. The other thing is the taxpayers are going to have to burden another school system. They're going to have to burden another fire department station. There's going to be a tremendous amount of money that's going to have to be spent to support it. Now, you folks will get a tremendous amount of revenue because you're going to have this new office complex, light industrial, high-density apartment complexes that'll give the city a lot of revenue. But the county, ultimately speaking, will have to pick up a huge tab. And that, of course, will trickle down to people leaving the county. I know that I would consider it if my taxes doubled because we're going to have to do something like that. And I think there will be unintended consequences that, in the long haul, will be detrimental to the city and the county. So I would like to hope that you don't rush to this decision. The land's not going anywhere. The owner's not going anywhere. Just stop and take a sober breath and figure out what's pragmatically the best for everyone. I think that we should treat that landowner with respect. I think he should be part of the dialogue, but I think the dialogue should include more of the county and city leaders in order to serve the people best. Thank you, sir. Thank you much. Anyone else?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
All right. Just kind of a side note for this 4A development issue. The total parcel they have, I'm not seeing anything that tells us what they're going to do with the rest of it. They've already got 200 acres that are already zoned for multi. What are they going to do with that? When are they going to do something with it? Have y'all been apprised of that?
No, this is a public comment. You can, like, if you don't ask a question...
No, I'm proposing rhetorically a question.
Sure.
And as you sit here trying to make the decision tonight, you have that 200 acres that's already been zoned and you have 308 acres more, which the ARC has already said is a project of regional importance. So when looking at that, then you have the additional land they have that they're going to develop. Have y'all seen the plans for that? And quite frankly, if you run about it, they don't make a hell of a deal anywhere if you sell plans because once tonight they give the zoning, I can tell you one of the speed dial or the text message will go, "We've got the zoning." And they can sell the property to anybody they want. And the quality of conversations you've had, the close encounters you've had about this, really, it really just depends on how long you've known this developer, this builder. I don't think y'all have any long-term relationship with these folks. So once you give that okay for 308 acres more, we're going to have a problem. What I'd like us to see you do is this. I'm not too much in the governmental affairs, so forgive me on that part of it. Just practical. If we stay the decision tonight, have an opportunity for the county officials, and by the way, the chairman of Rockdale County? Quite frankly, this issue with the water and the wastewater is a real problem. If they want to really, if you guys really, really want to get that built, and they really want to get it built, they're going to need to work a lot closer with the county because right now the available to wastewater as of last night is a huge question mark. And so if we really want to start that development and start pulling things in together and making it develop, the county's going to have to be a much closer partner because right now the chairman was really pretty much in the dark. He assumed a whole lot of stuff. So at this point, I'd rather y'all just stay. Let's look at it a little bit later, put your heads together, do something a lot better than we're trying to do tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Okay. One more?
Yes, ma'am. One more. I just want to remind you, I have two minutes. I'll give you a little lead wave.
Make it quick.
Oh, that's fine. You got two minutes. Stretch it out, talk slow.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'd like for you to take a moment and step back and just take serious consideration of what you're about to do and the decision before you. They have property, yes. They have current zoning. They can do some things with it, yes. But to give them a higher density because their shopping center idea doesn't work, is that really besting for our community? And when you say lovely little town homes and cute little homes, let's get real about it. Zero-lot-line homes. Zero-lot-line homes. And the words that I kept continually heard out of their mouth this last time we came before you was depending on the market, contingent on the market, based on the market. You guys talked about build-out and you wanted to see certain things being built out first and certain things being built out at the same thing as others, at the same time as others. And they said, "Yes, we're willing to do that." Well, heck yeah. Me too. If I'm living in their shoes, I'd say that same thing. But they contingent it upon what the market will bear. Bear that in mind. Do we really want a lot more rental houses? Another, one other comment is that I do think senior housing is needed. Reality check. To say, "I'm planning to put senior housing in here, but your zoning is for multifamily and zero-lot-line houses." That's not senior housing. That's not zoning that's specifically dedicated to senior housing. So guess what? Depending on what the market will bear, there's your answer. So I too would request respectfully that you back up, that you not make a decision on it tonight, that you meet with the county, that you really look at the water and sewer issues and all of the other aspects of the sheriff's department, fire, everything. Let's look at all the aspects and see what is truly best for the citizens of the city and of Rockdale County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to speak on this issue.
Okay. David, hold one second. I got done with coming out.
One second, David. Mr. Mayor?
How you doing tonight?
Councilman, my name is Brian Jenkins. I kind of agree with my buddy Jim, Rob, who spoke first, to a degree. However, my views are slightly different. I'm excited about this project. I'm very much so. And one would assume that you guys haven't done your homework, and I know you've done your homework. In listening to some of the comments, one would again assume that this is a rush. I know a project of this magnitude, certainly you would doubt it by eyes across the teeth. I would think that you've done that. As a former elected official, certainly that's part of my job and certainly I know it's part of your job. What I would love very much to see is not necessarily more leaders involved, but more community people involved. I'd love very much to see that because I think that plays an integral role in selling the project. Because if you can't market this to the people, then there's a major problem, not just to the elected officials, but to the people. Moreover, I also like to make mention in terms of the job opportunities associated with this. There are tremendous job opportunities associated with this that the county can certainly take advantage of. But one more piece. The developer also has a stake in this county. You know, this isn't a developer that, and I haven't met the person, but this, I venture to say that this isn't a person that owns that much land and has no connection to Rockdale County. So I welcome this and I commend you all for the work that you guys are doing. Commended. Thank you so very much.
I'm thankful to live in a country where we can speak our mind and I'm thankful for your services in this area. A few years ago, this board lamented the fact that there's 67% renter-occupied homes in the city of Toners and the effect that that has on our community with people that don't have long-term stake in this community, don't have a vested interest in this community. Part of the problem that we're having in the community is a lack of a sense of community. This project will not bring that to pass. This is a renter, more percentage-wise increase in renter-occupied, lack of community, people working outside the community, and this is just a bedroom place for them to stay tonight. I say I appreciate all of you. Mr. Mayor, I do have a little concern over the fact that you were on a YouTube video as promotional piece for 4A development before it went to the planning and zoning board and your own planning department. I think this gave undue pressure on those that are paid employees for the city and the same with our chairman of our county commission, who also was on that same video promoting this project. This puts undue pressure on those that are paid employees to approve the project. And I have a little concern on the conflict of interest. Once again, I appreciate what you do. You're good men, but we really need to look at this project and how it affects this community and the infrastructure that has been talked about before. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Okay. Thank y'all. All right. Been to revision, Tony, anything?
No.
All right. Tell me, y'all got minutes, May 15th, have a motion?
Over.
Second?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Old Business, public hearing ordinance 930, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Under Old Business, item one, it would require a public hearing addressing our ordinance 930, which is the proposed budget for 2013, 2014 for the city. It was presented by the finance chairman two weeks ago as a proposed budget. I'd ask you this time to conduct that public hearing. Two weeks from tonight, we'll have another meeting to potentially pass the budget. The budget was, and I'm speaking for Isabel Rogers, now presented last time, but she based on a very conservative number. It was based upon information and we're receiving best information we could get. And let me first say, we do not have the tax digested. It's still, that work is still being done. We don't know what those final numbers are. But based on projections of up to a 20% or more decrease in assessed values, we put this budget together. We propose this time to conduct that public hearing, Mayor. And when we have that further information, I can tell you that the tax commissioner's office has been very diligent in trying to get this information to us. As you know, our fiscal year ends on June 30. We've not had a tax digest in some time by the end of our fiscal year, but it looks like we will have that information in hand possibly before our next meeting in two weeks so we have a firm number to base a estimate on whatever type of taxation could be imposed.
I hope so. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. David, come on. Come right back on up.
Right back on up.
Yes, sir.
Different subject.
Different subject.
Once again, thank you for this opportunity. I would implore you to make sure that we have a budget that can fit within the taxes that are collected. Up and down this community, we have small businesses going out of business. Generally, the commercial property pays a lot more property taxes than do residential. It has been residential, which is mainly in the county, that has taken the biggest hit in their value and not commercial property. Commercial property owners continue to pay heavy taxes. At the same time, lease rates continue to go down because of the empty spaces. We go through every shopping center in this, in this community, every street in the city, and you will see empty space after empty space after empty space. You can't pay property taxes when you don't, not collect any lease. You can't pay property taxes when you don't have a business to do it. And I implore you to make sure that you don't have a 50% millage increase because of the budget and that you look at all the factors involved and take into account us four small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Scott?
Good evening, guys. Scott Ward, the local owner of Scott Ward Field Services. Much like David, I'm a small business owner in this community. I've watched the challenge that we've all faced of what we would go back many years and say leadership may be declining in the way that we would like to see leadership building in this community. I struggle some to watch a renter's mentality come into this community because I personally don't believe those are the leaders. If I could classify it another way, to say they're givers and takers. I think those that own things and invest things in this community would be givers in this community. Some that come and stay temporarily might not be considered givers, but more takers. I'm quite concerned that we do have a 20% drop in our millage rate. But I'd be more concerned if here y'all may try to replace that with a 50%, let me back up, a 20% decline in the tax digest, but a potential 50% increase to make up for that. We might do business differently. I don't do business that way. I'm not allowed to do business that way. I wouldn't stay here. I wouldn't be here. It's just a principle I would ask for your consideration to really think about. Again, with David's concerns, our small business communities do take a hit. And I think the small business guys have built this community many years in the past and we're struggling to continue and build today. Thanks for considering.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else want to speak on this?
Taking off on David's comments, and these are numbers well-known to y'all, but they just publicly doesn't round twice well. When you have a larger renter base coming in, they take $3 worth of services for every $1 they pay in. And that's historically across the United States. So what you're having here is a situation where we're looking down in the future. More people that are not, that are not here working, say, a Hill Phoenix or a new factory we'd like to have or new industry, is costing us. So that's part of where the city and the county have come downwards. Our infrastructure has been a crippled crutch. We need to fix that before we look at larger projects or residential. We're out of balance. We're out of whack. So David's comments are right on point. There's more to send me. You got just on a budget issue tonight to make. You have to really start to look, when you go to your seminars and your retreats, the long-term issue with the county, working with them to get the water, to get the infrastructure, the wastewater, so that we can bring industry here, so that we can have relief off of these business owners. I would be frightened if I had a storefront in Rockdale County. I would be frightened out of storefront because the future just doesn't look that bleak. With homeownership and renters going up and businesses staying pretty much far or going down, the picture for me doesn't look good for what you have to levy your taxes on. I mean, you're going to have to levy them. So that's my comment is that overall, there's a lot more fixing going on tonight than just making a couple of decisions on a couple of projects. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Anyone else? Okay. All right, we're going to close the public hearing here. That'll be another opportunity in a couple of weeks to hopefully have a tax digest. Figure these numbers out. Okay. John, we got zoning case 925.
Ordinance 925, zoning case 2013-06. Request to amend conference of land use plan. General Commercial Special Mixed Use Activity Center and rezoned 308-plus or minus acres from PG General Business District with conditions in the MXD mixed-use development district. In order to discuss this, we need this table that our previous meeting, we need to bring it from the table. So I move that we bring the item from the table for further discussion.
Okay. We got a motion, have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is coming from the table. What we're going to do here, we're going to have a discussion on this among ourselves and staff. The public hearing we had two weeks ago, and most of y'all spoke again this morning or this afternoon on it again. This is going to be for us, so I would respectfully hold yourself from commenting on anything we're doing. We're here and as Brian said earlier, we have been studying this for seven years. This is not something that just fell into our lap last month. And the council, I think, from what y'all saw two weeks ago, there's a lot of questions we have as well, too. And what, this is an opportunity, a public opportunity for us to ask our staff, to ask questions, to drill down on these issues, another layer, peel back that onion two or three or four more times on this. Mr. Roper and y'all, I might ask y'all also to come up and clarify our position only, not to, y'all again had y'all's opportunity two weeks ago to defend your position. So again, I appreciate if y'all, if we have a question to clarify, y'all would come up here as well to clarify a question we might have as well, too. So with that, Marvin, you want to come up and just kind of go through the points that the council has asked you to go through?
Mr. Mayor, Council. In terms of this development, first of all, it is 300 acres, huge development. And the zoning category that the applicant has applied, well, we've been working on this, on this, not just for 4A, but we, this ordinance was actually created in 2004. And then we permitted the zoning district several times to meet the ideals of the city council as well as allow developers to have some flexibility in the zoning district. The purpose of the MXD zoning district, first of all, is to integrate dwellings with office, retail, open space. Also, it requires connectivity. Basically, what I mean about that is that the streets have to be gridded. And of course, it also requires walkability. One other thing about the MXD zoning district is that it requires the high-intensity users to direct transition from high-intensity users to the low-intensity users. And that's what's been really demonstrated in the site plan that was submitted by the developer. In terms of coordination, let's say, let's talk about the land uses. Again, we just talked about the land uses. One of the things I would like to clarify in terms of the setback, this zoning district does allow single-family, townhomes, and multifamily. So it's not just a multifamily zoning district. It also allows office and retail. Now, what was quoted a while ago was that the issue that was concerned about setbacks. Single-family zoning districts, single-family buildings in the zoning district have to be separated 10 feet apart from another detached single-family dwelling. Now, townhomes typically, they are zero-lot-line setback. But the buildings where they're detached have to be minimum of five feet, but not more than 20 feet. And so forth with the multifamily. Now, in terms of the ratio for single-family, minimum is 50%. There is no max on single-family. So this entire development could be developed as single-family. There is a cap on townhomes, which is 20%. And then there's a cap on multifamily, which is 30%. So that, just want to clarify that. In terms of the transportation, and this is where we've always worked transportation for any project that's been developed in city counties. First of all, there was coordinated effort. One, if the property fronts DOT right away, first of all, the applicant does have to get DOT approval from Georgia Department of Transportation. They also have to work, in fact, cause the city and counties around their county as they combine companies to transportation plan. The city and county also work together to resolve transportation issues. So when we look at any development, and also to reinforce what we do with transportation, we also have the subdivision regulations, which have very strict requirements in that document as it relates to traffic studies in terms of whether or not the property requires red lights or whatever traffic devices or traffic control devices that may be required. So all those issues do have to be resolved based on whether the development is phased or just depends on the size of the development. We do address those transportation issues. If you look around, and maybe in the past years, they wanted to address appropriately, but things have changed in the last 10, 15 years as it relates to transportation. The way we look at it now, transportation does have to respond and coordinate, has to be coordinated with the land use based on what the land uses. based on what the land uses are.
Marvin, let me stop you a second, just on transportation, all right?
Yes.
So we had, we had a lot of concern on Johnson Road.
Right.
Residents there.
Yes.
So that's the, of the development, I guess I'm looking at, I believe where we were looking at was four, was site four where the beginning of the development would start, which would be fronting.
That's District One, fronting Iris Drive.
District One, okay. So road cuts, and I guess the main concern, what the residents were talking about on Johnson, was the car count that you had going out there. So what you're saying is that the DOT, city and county, they have to meet regulations on that. They can't just dump a thousand cars onto a two-lane road.
That's right.
So improvements have to be made. Now, the most important part of this was that we didn't want to have 100 road cuts going on Johnson Road.
Right.
Wasn't we, right, okay. So they would have to be spaced out, and I think my other comment was that the other mobility side of this live-workplace community we're talking about, sidewalks.
That's correct.
Sidewalks is included in this, too.
That's correct.
Encourage the walking and.
Right, that's correct. Only sidewalks are required by the subdivision regulations, but they're also required by the mixed-use development zoning district. And another thing that's required by the mixed-use development zoning district is that it does require trails and it requires a 20% open space. And the open space has to be usable open space, which means any structure has to be within 1,000 feet of that open space. So you just can't put the open space in an area where it's not reachable or not usable. It has to be usable open space. And to kind of further talk about Johnson Road, we looked at that, and one of the things we recommended is that the road cuts or driveways are limited to five, and they at least 660 feet apart. So if you think about that, that's typically DOT-type separation. Even before they consider a traffic study, they have to be at least 660 feet apart even before you consider a traffic, uh, traffic study.
Do I have any questions on transportation? I think we'll just maybe hit these bullet points one at a time, if that's okay, we do that.
That's fine. But initially, I think we had nine, cut some Johnson Road, that's the reason we reduced.
I believe it is seven or nine, I'm not sure. Same like seven sticks out, it might have been nine, I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Chris.
Going back to the ratios that you mentioned, the 1451's total for the 312 acres.
And let me clarify something about 1451. First of all, assuming that we even get to the construction stage, one of the things, if you read the definition of density is based on net acres, not gross, but net. So the first thing we have to clarify is the net acres of the entire site. That's really gonna be the number that determines the amount of dwellings that could be built on this site. Now, you know this site has quite a bit of wetlands, flood plain. And also, when you take into consideration of that calculation of net acres, you take out creeks, you take out any utilities nets, you take out roads, so you take out drainage detention structures. So there's quite a bit of area that you take out even before you get to the point of calculating your final number. So yes, 1451 has been thrown out there. We're not sure exactly what that number is until we actually get the overall plan. And whether they do it Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, we need to know exactly what that number is for the entire site before we move into it.
So whenever that number comes in, then we're gonna go to 2030?
That's where we can determine the ratio at that point.
On that.
Anything else on transportation, Chris?
I'm sorry, I thought.
No, that's what I thought we'd do, is maybe let's drill down to transportation issues, and then we'll leave the land use. That's the biggest part of this, ratios and all that. Any other questions on transportation?
Other than that, that it comes from the developers' dime, right?
That's correct. The developer will be required to pay all transportation costs in relation to this project. Not the city, not the county, not the city, the developers.
Developers will be on-site, is that gonna be contributing streets that lead to this?
Well, on-site as well as, you gotta consider Johnson Road, we have to consider Climbike, we have to consider Iris Drive, we have to consider Flatshow Road. We have to consider all those corridors as it relates to this development.
And then also will be on the development deck.
That's correct. In fact, when we looked at the transportation study that came in from the DRI, it pointed out several areas outside of the development that needed to be addressed from a transportation standpoint.
That's one point on that. But now, would the developer have to have all of these things in place before any bricks and mortar stuff to go up?
That's correct. Again, just depending on how much is built and how they phase it, that's how much transportation we would have to incorporate into the site. Now, you're not gonna be able to get all of it at one time. That's definitely how it works. But as these phase, and we have to really determine how much they, how far they should go with this because it makes no sense to stop at a certain point when you know they're coming back eventually and add something else. So we just have to make that determination of how much we are going to require the developers to put in. Because you don't wanna go in and put, expand or improve the road network and then have to come back and add on to that same road network. So we will address all those requirements upfront as we go through the construction stage.
So Marvin, that's an internal, you handle that internally now?
That's correct.
So.
That's correct.
Okay. So the major roads, we're talking Flatshow, Johnson, Iris, those roads there, that would be impacted, especially on.
And we will address those as well as the entire roads.
Okay, is there a master plan on transportation put in place on the front end, so we know what this is a look like?
There are.
As it builds.
Yeah, I may need assistance for Brad on this, but I don't know exactly what's on the comprehensive transportation plan, but there's some requirements or some recommendations in that plan as it relates to these road networks.
Is there a plan that would be on the front end on transportation Brad of a project of this magnitude dealing with those corridors? You got Johnson, Flatshows, and Iris.
There is some projects in the comprehensive transportation plan for Flatshows. DOT will check out and make sure to walk, needs to be done on Iris Drive. They'll have more say on what goes there. Climbike and Johnson Road, that will be done as traffic studies are done and traffic counts as the development is put together. And that's going to dictate what needs to happen to those roads, where turn lanes need to be, if a signal needs to be in there. And that's something that'll be ironed out as we go through the process.
So there is a master plan, I guess I'm talking about some idea of a master plan on the front end of this, on those corridors that are being impacted and those, the transportation side.
Yes, that will all be discussed before as we go through the, as they submit their developments, their development plans. And then the, and like I say, the traffic studies dictate what is going to happen to those roads. So until those full-blown traffic studies are done, we won't know exactly the traffic counts and how all the corridors are gonna work. Until they finalize that point.
In that plan, the sensitivity of neighborhoods on Johnson is foremost and paramount?
Yes.
Okay, I guess that's my point, I wanna make sure of those plans, huh? Okay. Any other questions on transportation, y'all? Marvin, you wanna talk about the water and sewer? Go ahead, I know that came up from Don Day, a lot of them came up to talk about that.
And I hesitate to get into details about water and sewer, but let me share with you from our staff point again. We've been working with water sewer in the early, late 80s, 90s. And we've come to an agreement, and it's actually been a standing agreement, and it's not been an issue, that any development comes into the city council, first of all, we don't issue any permit to do anything until we get, we receive that proof of purchase of a water meter and sewer permission from the council. Comparizing any sewer connections or water connections for the development. So if all approvals come in and we don't get any approvals regarding the water resources, the development is, it stands still until we actually get there. We can't do anything until they say we're okay with it. We have to have that approval.
Any questions on the water and sewer in council? Okay, let's hit the land use, that's only the most link to talk to this.
All right. In terms of the land use, if you look at the maps, and just here, and we, again, this, the site plan is not a definite plan in terms of what's gonna be placed, whereas most of the commercial and retail offices is up front, the I plan. And then the transition to multifamily up to, specifically in District One and District Two. And then, as you get to District Three, it transitions to some townhomes, and then of course, some single-family in there. And then, of course, as you get to District Four, most of that is single-family. There are single-family as well as, I believe, in District Three, but most of your high density is going to be in District One and District Two. Again, when we talk about the MXD ordinance, remember I said it requires a transition of high-intensity uses upfront, basically, when I say that, that will be closer to I twenty, and then as a transition to Flatshow Road. Those are low-intensity uses, which basically, we're talking about single-family. Again, if you wanna reiterate the percentages, again, for the single-family is 50% minimum. Again, on townhomes, it's 20% max. There was a max, they can go below, but not, not, there was a max. And then the same on multifamily, 30% max.
So the commercial we're talking about is interspersed in one and two?
Yes, yes, sir. There may be some white commercial that's being talked about at the corner of Flatshows and Johnson, but it wouldn't be anything heavy. But there's, it'd be no different than any other major intersection, versus Ebenezer Road, Ebenezer Road and Flatshows. There is a little community vending store there. So any commercial that will be placed, of course, this property is also the county, but it's just been concept talked about that would grow in that particular intersection. Otherwise, all the residential development in that area is single-family. And of course, just to clarify, the wetlands cannot be disturbed. The Corps of Engineers also would be involved in this property. They do have to issue a 404 permit to the developer property, anything, any dirt being moved on the property. And you can see there's quite a bit of, this property is really very intensive when it comes to environmental that it relates to the flood plain and the wetlands. There's a bit of rock on this site as well.
Marvin, a question, the total number of dwellings that can be built, is that based on gross acres or net acres?
Net, net acres.
And how do you, and you determine the net based upon just a general idea that I used to know?
No, no, again, we have formula that we use. We do have a formula, and it does, again, the wetlands, you have to subtract all that out.
Right, in fact, you didn't break that from these wetlands.
Right, you can't use that as part of your calculation. So we already know that's a, that the wetlands will be a subtraction from the acres.
What is acres of the wetlands, Marvin? How many acres are in the wetlands?
I'm not sure of the acres, total acres in the wetlands, the owner of the property may give you that, but I'm not sure. And again, all the streets are subtracted. And then from that, and then utilities nets, and the drainage structures, more particularly defensive lines, they're subtracted as well.
All right. Let me ask you another question. The picture is a true mixed-use development, I know we wanna give developers a lot of options. You know, talking about he can make a complete single-family if he wanted to from that residential component. But are the unit checks and balances to ensure that we get a true mixed development here? That we get retail and office, and we get some apartments, we get townhomes, we get single-family, we get, we get what the picture says?
Well, let me, let me just say this, that's to make sure that we, assuming this is approved, to make sure that we get what we need or what we want, those will be conditions of being set to make sure those mixes are appropriately built on this site as per city council. So the assurance is that the conditions will build in that requirement.
Coach?
I asked this before, and I never really got an answer to, you know, that would satisfy me as to, on the build out of these things, I asked about phases and the ratio within those phases. The order in which these things are gonna be built, in other words. So many houses, there's so much commercial, and so much recreation space, green space, or whatever. To me, that still hasn't been answered. I still would like to know, what is the order in which, if this development comes about, what's the order in which these things are gonna be phased in, so we won't get a lopsided build out of one thing and some of the other things that are, you know, might not be a high priority, or might be quick sellers, but we treat it as a back burner and might not ever get developed. And another thing that concerns me, you know, once you change the zoning, unless we look at this as a whole subdivision, once you change the zoning, as one of the people I just said tonight, then if it's sold to somebody else and the zoning fit, that you put wherever, the zoning comes in there. I'm more concerned about the phases, you know, that this development's gonna be built. But, you know, what's coming here and how much business gonna be here when you get this many houses? Can you see what I'm saying, how much walking space you gonna have here once you get this many houses, this many businesses? Instead of just going through, if they build all townhouses first, and then build all sewers next? You know, I'm not saying it's the order, but I would like to know what they have in mind as to the order in which they're gonna develop this.
I'm not sure what they have in mind, but let me explain this way, council, try. On a smaller scale development, obviously, it would be a lot easier. This is a huge piece of property. And I think because the ordinance is not specific, it's just, it's very specific in terms of, you know, how many units, residential, the percentages, the square footages for the commercial. But I think because this development is so huge, the city council has to make that decision. The city council has to control how the property is phased, how it's developed. The city has to do that. Because the property is so big, we have to make sure the property is built according to the way you want it to be built.
That's one of the concerns that I have, is I don't want to all come in and start Phase One commercial with multifamily, and then it dies. That's why I was asking about these percentages, the 30 to 20 in single-family. I would like to see, and I don't know if you can, control so that as they build, it's all built proportional along the way. I don't know if you're gonna do that or not, that's, that's the question.
Yeah, I think that's what the city has to have some say-so in how this property is developed. Not only in the current, basically, currently, I mean, in the near future, but in the future beyond those years. The city has to have input in that decision-making process. What is?
Gerald, yeah, I was gonna say, Paul, a comment, I guess, Mayor. Looking at this, one of the, I guess it's the letter R in the exhibit, talks about a 15 to 1 ratio of build of multifamily to detached, single-family units. If my math is right, that's only 4%, you know, or that they could build the entire apartment complex of 435 units, have only 29 single-family units built at that time. And I know that the developer takes exception to that particular requirement, I do too, but for very opposite reasons. In my mind, that's not a good ratio. And I agree with Coach, and, you know, that until I see something that I'm comfortable with, you know, I couldn't even agree with that. Well, do y'all have an idea? I know we talked about this as well.
Actually, yeah, actually, I hadn't talked to Gerald about this at all, but I actually, that caught my eye. You know, it's, the last meeting, one of the people was saying that they wanted, you know, to the question of how would they develop? And they said, we wanna show a little bit of everything, so people can see. We wanna see some retail office, wanna see some apartment, wanna see townhome, wanna see single-family, so they can see what it's gonna look. want to see townhome, want to see a single family so they can see what it's gonna look like. And then what whatever drives one, if you get more uh residential, then that may drive the retail. And then as the retail gets bigger, then that may drive more residential and then different components are growing based upon whatever the market seems to want. But uh that's what was said need to be done. I would much rather have a ordinance dictate how it gets done. And that's kind of what I think Gerald and Coach are saying. And that all sounds good, but I'd much rather have a document that says how this is phased in versus what somebody says how they want to phase it in. And and not to say this, but I'm saying that would be quite flexible. But I did some some math, Gerald, and the fifteen to one ratio, I didn't I didn't care for that either. So I did I did it in a in my and I haven't spent a lot of time on this, but.
That's a math.
Well, yeah, this is this is this is pre- primitive math, but I did.
Very primitive.
And I'm just gonna bounce this off.
We've seen your math before.
Yeah, I didn't care anymore, okay? Uh I did a ten to one ratio for the first fifty percent of the the total apartments that could be built, okay? Then I did two to one for the next twenty-five percent and a one to one the last twenty-five percent. And that way, you mentioned twenty twenty-nine homes, by the time, if you did it that way and all the apartments got built, they would get built over that period of time, but you'd have a hundred and seventy-eight homes, which is still far less than the seven hundred that could be built. But at least it's it's a step process as far as not getting one component out front. It needs to be a balanced com- a balanced growth in this area. And that may, that's just some numbers that I ran. I don't know whether, you know, ten to one may not be the right number, two to one, but the percentages, you know, percent, twenty-five percent. But the point is, I think something like this would would give us the control in the ordinance and yet still give the developers some flexibility in how he does things. They just will be market driven. I mean, you know, if people love townhomes, I guess it's gonna build a bunch of townhomes. I mean, no, no yard to cut, no gutter to plant. I mean, this is, they're great, you know, maybe single family, maybe the maybe the small lots aren't gonna be uh as important. Maybe people are gonna want a little bit bigger, not a big lot, but a little bit bigger lot. You know, the the number of single family uh units may go down based upon what the demand is, what people want. Uh but what I want this document to 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 have enough restrictions, if you will, so we can have the control that we want and yet still give them the ability to to build what they want to build. Within our guidelines. And we're looking at the big picture, okay?
Any other questions? Any other comments on that, John? You've been quiet over there.
I've been paying attention. No, not as well. There there are a lot of ways we can probably do that in the document, I think, uh that could be uh both sides.
Where's the commercial ratio?
A little bit more.
I believe what was discussed is that the uh uh ratio of twenty-five hundred square feet of gross leased or office retail for floor space to every five dwelling units. That's what was discussed. Twenty-five hundred square feet of gross leased or office retail space to every five dwellings. So that's any dwelling, multifamily, townhome, single family. So that's the, that has to do with the commercial part, commercial part of the development.
Those accepted numbers or is it industry standards kind of for those numbers?
Uh we didn't check the industry, but we based it on actually what was proposed to be built with what's signed. So we pulled those numbers from the applicant's data.
Gotcha.
Any questions on that, on the commercial, retail side? Anything else y'all have a question, Dan Paul?
Just just one aside, one of the questions that's been raised is about the school system. And I don't know if you were planning, but I did notice that the school superintendent and one of the board members here this evening, I don't know if you were planning, asked if they had any uh anything to weigh in on.
I'm sorry, I was reading a note.
Rich and Wales are here.
Right. Um Rich, uh obviously this impacts, you know, the total delta. I don't know if y'all have any comments y'all wanna make. I know y'all, well, one year, two weeks ago, and but if you wanna make a comment, you're more welcome.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to take too much of your time, but thank you, but the family, but we did meet before eight today. I certainly wanted to isolate just on how it would impact our school, uh particularly the zone of Sims Elementary and Edwards Middle School and Rockdale County High School, looking at capacity. One of the things I mentioned and I think Chris mentioned, I wanted to see uh what the build out timeline was. Uh we certainly, and when you look at capital outlay improvements, whether it's new buildings or improvements to existing, they take advance notice. Uh so we needed to know when groundbreaking would was projected to be and what they were looking like as far as sheer numbers. So uh we're still uh waiting on your decision, obviously, to move forward with our DOE uh experts and support system. But uh we've looked at it and we do have uh some issues with capacity, particularly at secondary. Uh when you look at our middle schools and high schools, we do have a bit of room uh to take care of our elementary, if there are young children involved. But as we mentioned with David and his counterparts, you know, we we really don't know uh what this uh you know, depending on whether it's single family or townhome, who we're gonna attract, what type of family. Does this family have, do the families have children or young children or older children? You know, those are just question marks that probably remain to be seen once uh the actual growth hits. So we're looking at it and certainly we do think that uh it has potential uh to impact our school system. So we want to be as involved as possible, which is why we met with them personally, so.
Yeah, you look at any large development, where is it just simple that? And that's something that y'all do, right?
Sure, sure.
Size of subdivision or multiple subdivisions going up in areas.
Certainly, we look at we look at subdivisions uh and 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 grows much, much smaller than this uh that would impact and have significant impact on uh our classrooms and particular schools uh in general. And uh certainly, when you look at growth in any one particular area like this, you face the possibility of uh redrawing district lines. And that's certainly something that as a first year superintendent is not something that I would propose that we do at this time. But that is a possibility down the road uh as the community grows uh and as our young people um move into our county, we know that that's a possibility. So uh we're we're attuned to it and certainly we appreciate your involvement uh and your consideration of the of the school system.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Rich. Thank you, Wilson. Alright, any other questions? There's a lot. I think we generate more questions now than we did even two weeks ago. So I'm 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 gonna kind of, John, kind of, I think we need to table this further.
Yeah, I would say I do think we made a lot of progress in getting, there's a lot of things to answer that need to be answered. But there there are more things that need to be uncovered as well. And uh were you gonna speak to this before I make a motion here?
If I might. Oh, just just recap the planning commission for this at their previous meeting and they had tabled till July eleventh, uh which we didn't actually regularly schedule a meeting. Uh they had more questions. They've seen you there. Uh and I think we've all got more uh information tonight than we had before. It looks encouraging. But uh I know Mr. Roper's here. He's brought uh plenty of his staff with him and that sort of thing. Uh I know David has listened to the concerns of the community. They have their community meetings. Uh they've made the effort to meet with various entities such as the Word of Amen, the school system and the like. Um I think it may be appropriate that if Mr. Roper chooses to, he might want to make a statement to the council tonight. But obvious to me that there's a little more work to be done.
Yeah, I'd almost think, John, that we would want to my recommendation before you need to table this is after the planning commission. I'd let them make their decision and then come back after. But anyway, Dave, would y'all like to come up and make a comment?
Thank you. Um plenty of color.
Watch questions. It is a big project.
And uh I appreciate, you know, every opportunity I can to share more information and if we need to do more. You know, we've had the first open house informational session in the last two weeks. And so um you know, if there are additional opportunities, to me, this is more about outreach and getting some facts in the world and sharing the vision to those. So um you know, we embrace these opportunities. Uh I think at this stage again, uh uh tabling and making sure that we're all comfortable with what we're looking at for our next steps, you know, rather than rushing to, you know, a series of conditions potentially that could impact in the next twenty years, you know, this project. So you know, take the time, get the questions answered and uh do what we can to share as much as we can. So I I appreciate the process and I appreciate you all listening.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
John? So Mayor, I would move that through.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I I've been speaking with uh Mr. Spann earlier. I understand he had spoken to Mr. Roper. Just to prepare to the record, if I understand what Mr. Roper has said correctly, uh he is almost recommending and suggesting that it be tabled. And since he is the applicant, that's in fact his position, I'd like for that to be part of the record just for for, you know, as we move forward so it does not look like that we're, you know, unduly delaying this process, uh over their objection, you might say.
Is is there any objections before eight, David?
No.
Okay, alright. Duly noted. John?
All of that in mind. I'd like to move that we table for the discussion of this issue until our next reg- regularly scheduled meeting following the planning commission meeting, which will be on July seventeen.
Yeah, motion, have a second. Any further discussion? Here and now, all the papers say aye. Alright. Mike, you're gonna you're gonna handle this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, as I recall in our last meeting, uh there was uh approval of an ordinance that uh set up that I think by which the Rockland County Board of Elections would run and manage our uh two thousand thirteen municipal elections with certain exceptions. Uh that ordinance was approved. Uh based upon that approval, uh this is a contract that's been worked out uh by Miss Bootchett, uh city staff as well as the uh elections department of the county uh uh by contract for them to manage that election for us. Uh there's been a couple of slight changes in the past years, basically incorporating some adjustments by state law uh of some additional personnel that could be required. Uh but uh we have reviewed it and we are suggesting uh that if it makes clear approval, we would ask that you approve uh the agreement by between the City of Conyers, Rockland County for the production of the City of Conyers two thousand thirteen in this whole election.
Alright. Have a motion.
I believe we approved the agreement between the City of Conyers and Rockland County for the two thousand thirteen city election.
Have a second, say any discussion? Here and now, all the papers say aye. Alright, John, you handled the last two.
For those of you who are new to city council meetings, the junior member of the council gets to handle all of the really good stuff.
And we've all been there.
Yeah, that's right. Item number two under new business is the reappointment of Alan Jones to the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission. Term of the appointment is a four-year term, July first of this year to June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen, and I would so move.
Have a motion, have a second. All the papers say aye.
Aye. Item number three under new business is the appointment of Perry and Benton to the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission. Term of this appointment is a three-year term from July first of this year to June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen, and I would so move.
Have a motion, have a second. All the papers say aye. Thank you. Alright, the new report, Gerald. Nothing to this hour, Mayor. Alright. Chris?
Horse Park, Horse Park is hopping.
It's hopping.
Hopping. Six shows, I think, this weekend, along with my buddies, gonna be going on this weekend out there.
We got the bull run, John. That's how it does, yeah.
The bull run, July, October.
That's how it does. Give us a time to train.
Accept your faculty.
You're doing much better.
Yeah, I'm signing up for that too.
Okay. So uh and then Bob Bell will be loading in for a six week show starting next week.
Thank you. You catching the bad guys?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're catching the bad guys. They own a run. If we can just keep all our cars repaired and stuff, we'll be alright.
Cars repaired and stuff. Is there a story of that?
Well, not tonight.
Well, that story for a shorter meeting.
We're gonna have to uh make some adjustments in salaries, you know.
Make some dollars.
Well, that's that's the schedule for another night.
Give you some name, man.
Perfect, say the uh, the City Police Academy graduates start tomorrow night. We have fourteen people?
Uh twenty.
Twenty people. Uh tomorrow night and uh uh the Junior Police Academy begins July eighth, but used between fourteen and seventeen. And uh these participants will uh go to jail, practice self-defense, learn about the Conyers Police uh divisions and learn teen traffic laws and more. So we are rolling along if what the public safety is concerned. Hopefully we can continue to be a good place to live, good safety for the.
Right. Thank you, Coach.
Just, you didn't want to come in on this, just the in the very methodical effort to replace Lynn Sears on instead of economic development council, the application process ended the end of May. Uh so the the culling down, the interviewing process will all occur during the month of June. We should have someone in place by the end of June, first of July, the latest, is that when it's the calendar that we're?
Yes, yes.
Which it is, it is moving.
I hope to have somebody on board, just in. We're gonna have time to flip our hats.
Alright, that's okay.
John?
If there's more business from my committee, I don't want to even.
You don't want to hear me.
But I would like to say whenever that bull run thing is, I'm gonna be out of town. I don't know when that is.
You signed up.
It's too close to you, Lex, and you're like, if you don't outrun the bull, you might have a special election or a couple of. So I'm gonna pass on this. I didn't live all these years to get killed by a bull.
Tony, staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh just repeating, I know some of this was stated, but uh we at four eight appreciate their diligence uh tonight. But we we as a staff have been working with them as better part of eight or nine years on this property and different aspects. I like what the economy might uh be like going back about eight years and the different variations that we've gone through. Chad has put in an incredible amount of hours to to fine tune this, so it'll be inappropriate in a in a wonderful asset for the City of Conyers. We'll we'll continue to do that and working with them through this process prior to uh planning commission next next month. Um and 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 to address one, Mayor, if you're if you're in a nasty video or something that none of the staff knows about, it's not affecting the work that we're doing.
I didn't know about it either.
We'll have the chief look into this.
Haven't do that.
But uh I can assure you it had no effect on this staff. Uh budgetary, um I was just, and this was in the presentation two weeks ago, but we we have the same mileage rate that we've had since two thousand and five. Matter of fact, uh over these years, we took that mileage rate down uh during four years in that period of time between two thousand and five to date. Uh over the past uh five years as far as taking advantage of the roll up, roll back, whatever terminology you like to use, uh we did not take advantage of that. And subject to this dramatic uh change in assessment has put us in a position where we've got to consider all of these factors. Uh hopefully, again, uh I'll give the facts commissioner a little kudos. He's promised us that digest before uh we have to uh make this budget presentation. And we'll have a better idea and we'll have a number to be considered uh for this council. And hopefully we'll have that in two weeks at the next meeting, present the second meeting. Pledge. Uh JHP, just one thing I would add, as long as we're talking about budget and economy and certainly it's economy driven. We talk about twenty percent decrease in assessments, it is because of this economy. I mean, you know, we we can talk about where we live and these kinds of things, but everybody's subject to this. We just kind of got hit a little bit late uh as far as uh maybe our fellow communities and that sort of thing. But something I would like to point out, we're seeing some activity in construction. We're seeing activity in potential permits. We're seeing activity in commercial districts. Uh we've got some meetings set up in the near future with some of the larger uh shopping centers that are in the area, talking about rehab and rebuild and re clients and these kinds of things. So that's looking up and just this may be a small item, but when Chris talked about JHP having a huge wiki, it is gonna be huge. But starting Sunday night, Bob Bell, who is our largest horse show, he's he's loading in, you know, these last two or three years. Typically, I think it's safe to say is typically, these people are fairly wealthy people. But those decreased numbers that we've seen over this past three or four years have been fairly dramatic. Well, he's on he's on board right now for over nine hundred horses competing in this next two week event. Compared to four that went as low as six hundred, even in the five hundreds. But that should be some indication that uh hopefully our economy is on the rise uh and with these numbers that Bob Bell is gonna demonstrate in this next two weeks. But I wanted to end on a little bit of good news there, Mayor.
We need some good news.
Better news, I don't think I have a reason for executive session tonight, uh, all of our dirty laundry's in the news paper.
That's good.
Our court decided to stay the, um, uh, lawsuit that was filed, and, uh, staff and our attorney who gives the death, so there, we, we don't have to talk about that.
Good, I was hoping.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, final comment, can we start with John? Any final comment you got?
None, thank you.
No, thank you.
Vince? Just want to commend, uh, Marvin and JP for their efforts in this process, I happened to be at the, uh, the open house at four eight, they, no, well, I was there too, but, uh, the one here as well, when JP made the presentation, and JP, you made an excellent, rather, oh, a rather lengthy presentation, and if everybody could, if everybody could, could, could hear you, you had just a handful of people here, unfortunately, but if everybody could see what you talked about for the thirty minutes, it would give them a much better feel for what this development can be. It can, it can be something really special if it's done right, so just wanted to say, especially thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Councilman. I was, I, I was just looking at this, uh, tax and that, this thing, I don't know if it's time to bring it up or not, but I was looking at a hundred thousand dollar house ten years ago, what it's worth today, and how much taxes the, uh, citizens are bringing in with that house in, uh, two thousand and five, and what it's bringing in now. It makes for a very interesting reading, and, uh, I mean, it's unbelievable, so, uh, I, I hope that, and I know a lot of people here tonight are concerned, and, and, and as well you should be, but, uh, make sure if you can get a hold of one of these, you might need to do that, to see the, the predicament that we are in here, in order for us to maintain the quality of life, as close to this quality of life as we've had in the past, because, uh, when, when I looked at this thing, I mean, it, it, it's just shocking. It's just shocking, the, the amount that came in two thousand and five compared to what we anticipate coming in for, for what was a hundred thousand dollar house ten years ago. With the, with the homestead exemption and putting in everything, it's, uh, it, it's really a shocking figure. So I, I'm hoping that, that people who really question the misery rate that we propose, but also take a look at this, so that they'll see what, what we're coming for.
It, it's not just rental, David, it's, it's the single-family, the tax residential with homestead exemption, it's all below threshold, and gets below certain threshold, there's zero taxes. That's where we are on the residential side. And I can assure you, this council, we are independent business people, so I, we, we get what you say, and I think the last five, seven years, just adding on what you said, Coach, is that, you know, we have not gone up on taxes, and we realize every dollar we take out is a dollar from economic development, so we, we get it. But it gets to a point, and I hope the tax digest comes in hot, where the four mil, but it gets to a point where you have to start looking at delivery of service. We're not growing government, we're now looking at delivery of service, because we have not gone up in seven years, and that's really what decisions have to be made, or you're going to cut public safety, you're going to cut this, you're going to cut that, because there's no more cutting we can do on staff, because we've done that through attrition over the last seven years. So it's, it's a tough decision, but we, we get what you're saying, we understand, and, and hopefully the digest will come in a whole bunch higher, so there won't be any, or limited amount of tax increases.
Can I add to that, just, this is not a funny story, but it's an actual true story, Coach, we took an actual house that what it was valued last year, what it's valued this year, not ten years ago, but last year and this year with the reduction, and to collect the same taxes we collected last year on that house, the millage rate would have to be fifty-two. I'm just saying, that, that's probably an exception, obviously an exception to things, but the point is, I mean, the amount of taxes that, that we're missing out on because of the overall, you know, reduction probably barriers is, it's real, I mean, it's not. But we're not going to raise the millage to two anymore. And that, that's not, that's not mine.
Not on this one, anyway. No time being, what?
That's all right, no, thought ahead, yeah.
Chris, to follow up on that, um, the numbers are shocking, but I got to give our staff a lot of credit for being able to do and maintain and provide services that we've been providing all these years with less and less money each year that we pay, so, certainly in your senior staff, y'all did a hell of a good job for us, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, can I?
Sure.
Since y'all brought it up, I had my chance. The, uh, one thing about our, our digest, Conyers is largely a, a city of small homes, and those houses that are, say, a hundred thousand dollars or less, the taxable values have decreased to the point where there's negligible or no tax being paid on them, and it doesn't matter what you raise the millage to, there's still no tax to be paid on those. And in fact, what you would have assumed to be the case, and what a couple of people said was the case earlier, no longer applies. And that is that the, the rental homes are not really carrying their weight, in reality, they don't get a homestead exemption, they're owners of those rental properties, so they are paying more for the city services than many of those who own homes here, and that's, that's just, the system just didn't anticipate that situation.
Chris, Gerald? Just a little piggyback on that, we were very fortunate, and, you know, I guess Vince and I particularly get to see firsthand what staff goes through, being on the finance committee, and, uh, you know, Brad and the chief were over six feet tall until they went through Isabel's first year of training. It's, uh, I mean, they, they have done a, a fantastic job, uh, I don't think that, um, we can fault ourselves at all in that regard, I mean, they, they have taken what, what has been given to them, and, and where they could, they multiplied, and where they had to cut back, they cut back, and, uh, we were very, very fortunate, and I hope people realize that. We were very, very fortunate to have the staff that we do. Final comment, uh, Marvin, JP, thank y'all, uh, this has really been a burden of, of David for seven, eight, nine, ten years, and like we've been talking about this for a long time, with this four-eight project. So, uh, we're going to keep laying through it, and, uh, we got another seven weeks there. Public, if y'all got any questions, anything, y'all know how to reach us, and, uh, there'll be another, uh, planning commission meeting on this in another month, and then we'll follow up two weeks after that, so we got time to, uh, get it right, and, uh, all y'all's comments were valid as well, too. So, uh, again, thank y'all for attending as well. Back to you, Stan Durn.